Sure, I'm Matt Humble. I'm running for the at-large position, as you guys know. And I have been the chair of the Cannabis Regulatory Commission for the last three years and on the commission for the last six. I've been working to get me currents for everybody on cannabis and the drug war. I don't know if you want to go too far in the direction of that or just put it on the list.
Yeah, how long the introduction?
Go first.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, we can all go on your websites and read about you, what you stand for. We have a couple minute introduction.
Yeah, I've been living in Oakland since ninety-two. A carpenter, the only carpenter on the ballot. Been working, immersed in the art world in Oakland and working on different political things as things come up that are important for Oakland.
Alright.
Thank you.
I know we're so used to being in a room with a beeper. So, good afternoon, thanks for having us in. It's really great to get a chance to catch up. My name is Rebecca Kaplan and I am your Oakland City Council member-at-large. Was elected to the city council in November two thousand and eight. And prior to that, I served on the board of AC Transit. And my history before that was as a tenants' rights lawyer. And I went to law school at Stanford, where one of my professors was Michelle Alexander, author of The New Jim Crow. And I got involved in the movement against mass incarceration, providing legal help to inmates, but then also got involved in efforts to change laws to reverse that. I grew up in Toronto, Canada, which is part of why I'm such a strong believer in things like single payer healthcare and good public transit, which Toronto is examples of both of those. In terms of my time on the council, some of the recent things I've been working on are tenant protections, air quality and banning coal. I was the author of the first-in-the-nation cannabis tax on the Oakland City Council and conceptualized and launched the Free Broadway Shuttle, which you see around here. And my endorsements are on the webpage, but I am endorsed by the Democratic Party as well as the majority of our state legislators of the area and the majority of the city council, as well as a whole bunch of different press groups.
Hi, my name is Bruce Kwan. My family's been in Oakland since nineteen oh five, a fourth generation. I have been a civil rights attorney and a law professor. I got my start at Berkeley in nineteen seventy when I was one of the leaders of the Third World Strike. Started the Ethnic Studies Program, later worked on the Pell Grants. I've been active in communities of color since I came back to Oakland in nineteen seventies, working on the first African-American community, Lina Wilson. You can see, what you won't see on my website, I was the assistant campaign manager for Tom Brady in nineteen eighty-two. And I have been involved in politics in Oakland since then, mostly in the Chinatown community, where my great-grandfather started Chinatown. Reason I'm running, I'm seventy years old. This is my last opportunity to try to make things better for Oakland. Fifty years since I've been in Oakland. I was racially profiled when Oakland was segregated and Oakland has not changed. It's still the same situation it is now. Fridays, I walk as part of OCO East Oakland every Friday night, stop on violence. I also have been an environmentalist, working at the first, as part of the first, what we call the modern environmental movement, coming out of Berkeley. I worked for Save the Bay forty years ago. And throughout my tenure, I've worked on everything from the Subduals Mat Act to CECLAW, lobbying for and working on those issues. I'm retired and trying to make a change.
Thank you.
Hey, this is Peggy Moore, I'm sorry you get a chance to meet her by your room. I am running for, I'm a candidate running for city council-at-large. I've been in Oakland now for twenty-five years. I've worked on a variety of issues. Number one, advocating for health access. I've also worked with seniors, worked for lavender seniors of the East Bay, which actually focused on seniors and their placement when they were going to senior centers. I not only advocated for other organizations, but also advocated for the city to be able to make sure that they had a place to be able to gather. Because a lot of folks were in their homes and weren't able to come out. And when you go into a senior center as a senior and LGBT, they actually couples a split and put into two different rooms. And so we got in front of that early and began to educate people around that. I worked on the No On That Campaign, which was a campaign to recognize gay marriage here in Oakland, here in California. I also served as a founder of Sisters Step in Pride, which is an East Bay dive marching festival that was successful for over ten years here. And that was just something that was driven by passion and the whole thing around it was bringing our whole communities together. You know, I did, done a lot of work with NEA, which is a black organization that focuses on lesbians. We've been around for twenty-five years. And I've always been into trenches. Coming from Oklahoma, I went to my very first lesbian wedding and I walked into the room and there was a hundred black women. And I was like, what the heck is going on? I'm at home, because I've never seen that before. It never was my experience. So, but what I also learned there as well, there were so many people that were in that room that actually couldn't come out. They actually couldn't tell their story. So for me, I made it my purpose to not only be out, to bring my whole self to the table. So politically and as an out lesbian and actually being able to engage not only in African-American community, but communities abroad. There's a lot of stuff that comes with that. And so that is one of the reasons, in my core essence, I am an organizer, to be core of the soul. I've always been an organizer. And that's one of the things I think that is missing in this city, in terms of this particular seat. We get access to the whole city. And if we can begin to engage across our whole city, from this particular seat, we can actually see more patterns that would actually help us to have a different influence in terms of how we make decisions. I'm also a firm believer in restorative justice. I believe this is an opportunity for us to be able to come together as a community and deal with conflict. And one of the reasons I'm excited about it is because right now, in Oakland Unified School District, it is happening in our schools. We are seeing our young people who are coming to school that are actually having the space to begin to heal and do the work they need to do. You know, there's a lot of things I'd love to be able to talk about. I'd love to be able to really just get to know each other. And if you have any specific questions, I definitely love to be able to share them. But I'm excited to be here and thank you for inviting me.
Thank you. Darwin's gonna lead the talk today, but everyone's gonna ask questions.
Sure.
Go ahead, Darwin.
I think everybody wants to know the medical marijuana regulations, especially the equity stuff. It's been very controversial in the past few council meetings, community meetings. What's your take on, and try to be brief here, but what's your take on the current politics of this? The seeming political impasse that there is? What do you think the ideal equity regulations around medical marijuana are in Oakland? Because this is gonna be a huge industry in the future. And let's just start here and go down the line.
Well, about two years ago, I went to a public safety meeting because the city was suggesting that only the dispensaries get to have permits and nobody else. And I raised the ruckus and they sent the whole, all the ordinance back to my committee, to my Cannabis Regulatory Commission. And we worked about eighteen months with meetings to get a really good ordinance. And it came to public safety. And unfortunately, I didn't, wasn't aware that Brooks was gonna add all these things to it, the equity stuff to it. Ultimately, the storyline changed from legalization to reparations from the drug war. So it's a, ultimately it's a positive, but the apparatus that was created, I don't think it will lead, will hold up against a legal challenge. And I think we need to move, if we, if we don't drop the equity thing altogether and just give permits to people and make it easy for people without, with lower incomes to get permits, we need to, at the very least, expand the beats as they are. And my commission has recommended that. But instead of making exclusionary with a one-for-one, we need to make it so that we're, the idea is, we can help people without decidedly hurting people. And the way it's set up, we can give people things like amortization of fees instead of exclusionary, excluding their competitors. I think there is a possibility this whole equity program is a hidden cap on business. And it's anti-competitive as well as exclusionary in the sense that people, there are people that should get the equity, there are not getting equity. Right next door to people that are getting it that maybe shouldn't. So it's, and honestly, this is something that I haven't really talked about. It kind of pushed, Rebecca and I, it kind of pushed me into the campaign when the suggestion was to vote for unanimously for as it was, as it is stands now. And I said that was a bad idea because it'd be really hard to convince people after voting unanimously to like change their vote and we're at the midst of this. And it started me thinking about running when I, when we were kind of left hanging. Although I know Rebecca is supportive on cannabis, it is really frustrating to be left holding the bag on this whole thing. And, but I think we're having progress, but it's taken a long time and it didn't need to go out, go this way at all. And so I think that's...
Cool. No, I'm really glad that we're now having an opportunity to talk about this because I think that the fact that Oakland has not yet started to issue these permits is a huge problem. And in fact, we were promised in June that the permit applications would be issued over the summer during the council recess. And then the administration made the choice not to issue them and didn't tell us. So in June, we were told they'd go out in July, July we were told they'd go out in August, August we were told they'd go out in a day now. And we come back from recess and they haven't been issued. And businesses and potential applicants are freaking out that, you know, there's not gonna be any potential future in Oakland for them. So we absolutely have to have a system that is effective and we absolutely have to be taking action timely because there is a moment of opportunity here. And so let me talk about what I see as the way forward on this moment of opportunity, which is that fifty percent of zero is zero. So if we build nothing, if we either, some people believe some, we're doing it intentionally, but whether it's intentionally or not, if we fail to get a functional system up and running and then lose the jobs, the tax revenue, the economic opportunity, that will hurt everybody. And the goal of equality is not that everybody should equally have zero, right? We could completely screw this all up and then all people of all backgrounds would have nothing. And you could call that equality, but that would be a completely unacceptable outcome to me. And so let me say what I think we need to do, and the council will be discussing this November fourteenth. A bunch of my proposals have already gone to the city attorney for vetting. One, we need to recognize what it is that's holding this back. And it isn't just the dispute about the equity set-asides. There are a ton of questions that the administration and the attorneys have sent back. Things like, we're confused about how to process an application from a nonprofit or a worker-owned co-op. You know, questions that go way beyond just the equity set-aside issue. And so I've sent a list of suggestions, I've sent you a copy, I don't know if you want me to send it around to everybody, that deals with a lot of these issues that are not, hopefully, controversial, that they are impeding the processing of applications happening, so there's that. And then on the question of equity, I think we need to distinguish between two separate things. There are two proposals that are being talked about together. One is to put some money into programs that help historically underserved communities, including potentially lower-income applicants, as well as the community more broadly. And that I support. But I do not support naming specific organizations in setting aside money. But I support setting aside a share of the revenue that we make from this growing economic opportunity for things like illegal dumping, abatement, jobs programs, and funding to help people who don't have startup capital to enter the cannabis industry. I don't support the other half, which is the twenty-five percent city ownership and the other things that would prevent permits from issuing. And so those two were sort of presented together, but they're actually really two separate proposals and there's no reason we wouldn't act on one without acting on the other. I do not support the city demanding an ownership share of these facilities.
I have a different perspective on this whole thing. It actually comes from where I was raised and what I see. I come from the communities of underserved, mostly communities of color. This is really a community of color versus a white issue. And as much as I don't agree with Councilwoman Brooks, she has a point. Our communities have been underserved since I was a kid. And I don't know as much as Matt knows about this whole marijuana initiative and this whole issue, but I do know that our communities have not gotten a fair share of services, of job opportunities, of educational opportunities. And we are still back where we were in the nineteen fifties when I was raised. So if I speak about this issue, it's more in the context of equity. The city has not served every person, particularly communities of color. And I'm not sure that any solution that's been proposed here is going to address that particular issue. This is a typical iceberg. And it's one of the reasons why I decided to run, is because the city has not moved in a direction that I think it should move in, which is toward equity for every citizen in this community.
So the equity piece is important to me. Not as it's stated right now, but it's real for a lot of folks in terms of people who've been incarcerated and now we have a new industry coming out that they've been went to jail for. And so that's just a big deal, it needs a lot to a lot of people. So we need to figure out how to, how to do that. And I don't know if it's about making someone whole, I don't know exactly what the pieces are around that. But I definitely think just the, just the conversation around that is important for us to have and to begin to heal around that. I don't think it should be like, well, what is the equity, no, you shouldn't do this and that. I think this is a real issue. And I think that there's opportunities for us to really begin to see each other differently in this community. So number one, I do not support the twenty-five percent at all. I think that makes no sense, I don't think it's smart business. I think it's going to not invite the right folks in the, to come and participate. I think this is a growing business, I think we need to be key players in this business. And I think we need to be bringing thought leaders to this table. Nobody should be turned away and played out, played full out with this in terms of cannabis business. I am a little interested about how do we work with individuals of color who have been incarcerated to get in the business? And what does that look like? How do we do that in a way that is equitable and fair? I do support owner-occupied and co-op facilities and dispensaries and businesses. So I think that it's important and I think it creates more wealth for the community here in Oakland. I was definitely devastated by the meeting that happened recently in the council, just around this whole conversation. I think it is creating a wedge with our community and people, communities of color and a white community. I remember when I ran for city council in District Two a few years ago and I had the opportunity to meet with the cannabis community then. I walked into the room and everybody in the room was white, talking about cannabis. And I kept saying, where are the folks of color who are going to jail around this? So this issue is not a new issue. So the fifty-fifty piece in terms of the equity license for going to folks of color, folks for going to other, I'm not quite sure how I feel about that, because I think the businesses need to be successful. So I think that we need to make sure that there is a model that is successful for all businesses, but particularly the ones that are equity that we're looking at. I think the biggest thing here is the city doesn't have enough staff to do what needs to be done. You know, why, why, why is it that we don't know how to do this when we've been doing this business for quite a few years now? So, you know, and I think a lot of that has to do with not having enough staff to be able to actually go out to the community and actually be able to do the things that needs to be done. But at the same time, I'm excited, I'm glad this is happening in Oakland. We've been a cutting edge, we've been leaders around this. And I think we actually set the opportunity to do it right. And I want to make sure that we create as many opportunities to do that as well. But I want to make sure that we just know that if people have been arrested for this job, this business, and that now it's money-making for people, we just gotta figure that out a lot better.
Can I just add something about how we solve that problem?
Sure, really quick.
Vote yes on Prop sixty-four. Prop sixty-four not only has legalization in it, it has a mechanism to wipe records of people with previous convictions. So one of the ways we could solve this problem that is part of this wrestling of the Oakland policy that's in debate is by voting yes on Prop sixty-four, we'll solve a big piece of that. And the cannabis tax that I wrote several years ago already has a built-in ten percent rate when we go to adult use, that will double our revenue also.
Matt Bruce, do you want to even jump in and add anything real quickly?
Very quickly, I want to say that like every year we have, my commission, we do get reports from the police and very detailed about cannabis arrests because the commission was created by a measure C, which was a decriminalization measure. And I did, my committee is there, our commission now, is there to make sure the police are, and the city is enforcing the decriminalization and ending of the drug war. Every year, they don't, they're pretty good on it about it, except for the fact that this is gonna happen with sixty-four too. This is the problem. People of color in certain areas, we're talking ninety percent of the citations, and other places that there are none, you know, basically. And so sixty-four is not gonna fix that. The city council asked to like come strong on drug war, not just on what things...
So let's, let's jump into that now. The police department, the Oakland Police Department. Do you think, is it, what is your opinion as to where the Oakland Police Department is at currently? Because we were hearing, you know, earlier this year, recently as April or May, or April, we were hearing that the Oakland Police Department is, you know, on a path to exiting this thirteen-year-long saga of federal court oversight and that they had implemented all these, you know, cutting-edge new policies and that they're policing in a constitutional manner. And then they got in a bit of trouble earlier this year and there was a scandal and there was another scandal. And there's still a lot of people in the community, particularly Oakland Black community, who say that the police and the way that they're treated on the street, it involves racial profiling, it involves a lot of violence and brutality still. What's your take on where the police department is at? Do you feel that the mayor has made some good decisions recently about police leadership? Do you think we're on track to get a good new police chief hired? And how, how would you work, or how have you worked, to transform policing in Oakland? Because this is a really big deal and it relates to the marijuana arrests you're talking about, but it just, on every level, right, on every level, traffic stops to shootings, everything. Let's actually start down here with Peggy and then we'll go this way.
Well, you know, this, this is not a new conversation for Oakland. I mean, the thing about, we're getting ready to celebrate the fifty years of Black Panther. So when you talk about the relationship between police and community, it's been going on forever. We've had a hard time healing. And implicit bias is real, how people see you. It only happens in the police department, it happens in other arenas as well. You know, so, so I think that we have, there has been some good things that have happened. I think we did come in a year thinking there were some good things that happened. What I feel is a scandal set us back big time. I think that it really indicated there was so much going on that we were still unaware of. And no matter how much we dig into it, there's still so much more stuff that is going to reveal itself. So what is it gonna take for us to get out of this oversight? We don't need to get out of it until we're right, until we're ready. We don't even know what that looks like yet. This is so into the walls of our police department that it needs to be healing in a way that really begins to transform how we even see each other. I'm a firm believer in restorative justice. I believe this is something that we should do in our communities in general, not just from incarceration. This is how, one of the ways that we as a community and neighbors should begin to figure out how do we see each other and engage with each other. Because when you're talking about, because there's a lot going on, there's people feeling like they're displaced. You got a community that used to be fifty percent of the population and is now down almost to thirty percent of the population. You still have brutality that's happening with the police department. So people are scared and feel like they're not being heard. And then you got the cannabis, can I get in the business, right? So there's this fear that is going on. But we have an opportunity to be able to sit down and how do we see each other to be able to move Oakland forward? So I think that I do appreciate the fact that there has been conversations in the community to discuss what the police chief is gonna look like and what do we want in that? What do we want from that person? We often hear that we want somebody who's born and raised in Oakland, who's been here, who knows us. And we have a mix of that here in Oakland. And I think that one of the individuals that ended up leaving or stepping down actually is born and raised in Oakland and a person of color. And somebody who we trusted, but yet still was caught up in this scandal moment. So who do we trust in this process? So I think, I think that we are going in the right direction, so I think the stuff that we're talking about is real. And I think that we have an opportunity to be able to change it. I don't know all the stuff that's going on in terms of the work that's happening with Sabrina, with the mayor, the police department, and I'm not, I'm not sitting at that table. So I don't know all the things that are bubbling from that. But I look forward to being able to hear more about that. But it has to be healing in this community, we've got to see each other differently. We all got to take some responsibility in this process. Implicit bias is real, racism is still there in this community and we need to be able to take that hands-on.
Darwin, let me first say that this profiling is not limited just to the black community. This profiling also affects Latino community, in my particular case, the Asian community. When I was the acting city attorney in Alameda, I was profiled and stopped by the Alameda police at one-thirty in the morning and asked why, as he said, boy, what are you doing on this side of the bridge? You should do that side of the bridge. That was nineteen eighty-nine. When I was growing up in Oakland, we were routinely profiled and beaten by the police. I don't think that's ever happened in the white community, it's happened in my community many times, to my classmates and my friends. That hasn't changed. We still have the same problems now that we had then. One of the reasons why I joined OCO through my church and walk every Friday out in East Oakland is to try to stop gun violence. And part of the OCO stopping gun violence and Operation Ceasefire is procedural justice, because I thought procedural justice training for the police was an opportunity to build some kind of trust, or let me put it this way, to get rid of the mistrust between our communities and the police department. But clearly, that mistrust is so built into the police department that I'm not sure it will ever correct itself. People who are in the police department, many of those people live outside of the city. To them, it's a job, they come in, they do their job, they leave. And they have no concern for those of us who live here, who were born here, who were raised here. Now getting on to the issue of police chief. Peggy's right, Paul Figueroa, great guy from the Latino community, went to Cremona High School. Stepped down as assistant chief, went back to captain, because he could see the handwriting on the wall, that he couldn't make a difference because implicit bias within the police department is so strong that you're never gonna be eradicated, in my opinion. If you bring in a police chief, you're gonna bring in somebody who's been steeped in that culture for their whole life. And regardless of what color they are, they still are gonna respond, react in the culture in which they were raised, that is, the police culture. So I would say, if you want to bring in a police chief, you ought to bring in somebody from the outside. Maybe that woman who's at Stanford, who talks about implicit bias in Stanford, run the department. And see if she can make changes, because certainly Reverend Ben was so frustrated.
Big Brother.
McBride, OCO, I'm part of OCO, I'm part of people's leadership. We're so frustrated that we don't know whether there's a solution to this problem. I talked to Judge Henderson, who's somebody I've known for many years, because we're involved in civil rights together. He says, you know, Bruce, it's a challenge, it's just not gonna happen.
Well, there actually are solutions, just like there are solutions to global warming, which is real. But there are powerful forces that don't want the solutions to global warming to be implemented and that's why they're not, not because they don't exist. And when it comes to how you choose, hire, recruit and oversee a police department that does not abuse the people in the community, and let's be clear, what's been going on is abuse and we should not hesitate to call it abuse. But when you look at how police departments, some police departments don't abuse people to this degree that we see in Oakland. And there are a couple of things that need to be done differently. And one of them is oversight and accountability. So I'll start with that and then I'll go to hiring, which is the other half. When people are given the message that they are allowed to get away with misconduct, then that creates that kind of environment, then you attract people to the job who are like that and you demoralize the people who aren't like that. And so the fact that there is such a long history of, not only of the incidence of abuse, but of people then getting away with it and not being held accountable and not having independent oversight is inextricable from the problem, because it creates the culture and perpetuates the culture. So one of the things I've been fighting for, push for it at the previous election, but it didn't make it out of committee, so worked for this election is, again, and successfully, is independent community oversight of the police department. And that is so important, both for overseeing actual cases and also for building trust. Because if there's no independent oversight, if the police are determining on themselves, hey, we determined we didn't do anything wrong, right? Like the FBI determined that in five hundred out of five hundred shootings, they never did anything wrong. If the police determine for themselves they did nothing wrong, no one's ever gonna trust that. Even in the case where the cop actually wasn't in the wrong, people won't trust it. And so we need an independent community body that has those authorities. And that's why I'm supporting LL on the ballot, but also, I fought to make it stronger and more independent. And that's why I'm supporting LL on the ballot, but also, I fought to make it stronger and more independent. And as you probably know, we had a bit of a showdown at City Hall over that vote of an even stronger one. And I wanna make clear, I am supporting the version that did make it to the ballot. But there were some pretty powerful people, pretty pissed at me, because I fought to make it stronger and more independent. And that's what the community wanted, and for good reason, because they were trying to rebuild trust in an environment where trust is completely gone, and having oversight be independent is an important part of how we do that. So that's some of the perspective I bring to it, is the importance of that. Now, second thing is the hiring. When, historically, OPD has gone out of town to hire people. And they're not hiring problematic people by mistake. They're not trying to hire Oakland residents. And so I am asking, and this got scheduled to Public Safety and then deferred, so it'll come back. I'm asking for us to adopt a fifty percent local hire goal on our police department, just like we put on construction contractors. And that doesn't mean they have to stay living in Oakland, because I know that's not legal to require. But the point isn't that they have to stay living in Oakland, because we can't require that. It's that if they're from here, grew up here, they're gonna have the knowledge and the community connections, even if they then choose not to live here after that point. And to really work on the hiring of more women, more people of color, and more LGBT people. I mean, we have a department that does not reflect at all the community that it serves, and that perpetuates that sense of distance and disconnect. And I'll just close with something from the implicit bias training, which is, when I ask the question of the trainer, "Okay, so you know that people engage in racist acts even not consciously. How do you select people who will or won't do that? Like, if you're trying to pick people who aren't gonna do that, like violently overreact against Black people, what would you do?" And what she said was, "Well, it's not just giving them sensitivity training. That's not what predicts they don't do it. What predicts it is that if the person, even if it's a white person, has lived in and spent extensive time in diverse communities, so that their policing interactions aren't like the only interactions they ever have with people of color. And so picking people who've had those life experiences is one of the strongest predictors to people who are less likely to violently overreact. And on the independent oversight, the last thing is it has to go all the way to the top. One of the reasons people don't feel that the oversight system works is that they only punish the lowest-ranked person in any given incident, and don't investigate the people higher up the chain command. And that gives the message that the department is really okay with the thing, because the higher-up people involved aren't punished."
The cops.
Yeah, great. Okay, so first of all, I think it's really sad, it's our worldview. Just like we're on a war footing with our budget nationally, we're on a, we have the same footing here, and we don't see it, it's just kinda normalized. And the fact that we spend so much money on police enforcement instead of life enrichment. We need to have goals that are long-term, like, maybe we can't do it, maybe it's not now, but we need to see a world where that's not the norm. So we need to have long-term goals to shift the budgetary things going on there. I'll tell you, when the whole exploitation of Jasmine came out, there was like a triple tragedy going on. Well, one tragedy is the fact that this young lady was being exploited. The second tragedy was that the city of Oakland has been working on wonky strategies that need to be picked up across America that'll help people with the policing. And they're actually happening here in Oakland. But the conversation about the corruption is distracting from those wonky, about those little wonky things. But meanwhile, while good things were happening, the third tragedy is, we still don't, the city of Oakland still isn't making mandatory crisis intervention training. The fact that police officers show up, like the fact that family members that will have a problem, a mental illness problem, and they need to call, they need to fifty-one-fifty and go to John George Pavilion. And what happens is the police show up, and they may not be, they may, there's a chance they may not make it to John George. They may die because of acting erratically. Those kind of things have to change. I met with Paul Figueroa, I knew him before, from my commission meetings, he would come and present things. And I was so impressed with him, you know, I was like, "Someday, I hope you're chief." And then I called him chief by mistake, and he said, "Oh, no, don't call me that. I never want that job." And I was like, "Okay." And it's too political. And I was like, "Oh, interesting." And then when he got the job, I was like, "Wow, beyond what he wanted. At least Oakland got what we need." And then he moved down, and I ran into him last week in civilian clothes, but he's working with Oakland right now. And it's unfortunate, we couldn't hold him, and I wonder about that, what was going on there. I wanna say, there's been a lot of work on a psychological study through Stanford on how we can police better in this country, using Oakland as an example. We have fifty different items they suggested were really important, that would make a difference in changing policing in America and Oakland. And one of them I found was interesting, was like, there's little things, like just the form, like, when you fill out your forms, write down who your captain, whatever they call it, the next person in line. So that you know, maybe when you're following data, you can tell that the officers that are in charge of the group of people. Yeah, they will, maybe that's why certain things were happening. You can read different kinds of data sets. But one of the exciting things was, there are gonna be some self-policing, and we're gonna be using, hopefully it will happen. I talked to one of the developers around vocal voice training, using computers to listen to the tapes that we create, and using analytics to tell whether you were, how you were talking to the public. Were you changing, are you more polite talking to one group of people, or less polite to another group of people? Do you mention certain things?
Do you ask them if they're on parole?
Right, exactly. So these things are gonna happen, what's gonna happen is the computers are gonna like, go bleep. And then when you're filling out your forms, and then you're gonna, you have to listen to yourself, and the computer's gonna tell you, "This is what, maybe you need to check on this thing." You doing it?
Can I make two points, two short points?
Yeah, I'll come back, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll let you all kind of respond, make one more statement about the cops, and then I want the other people to jump in.
I just wanna clarify the background. I made a statement about the police culture around the country. I made that statement because I was a national Durham counsel for the Organization of Chinese Americans, which is the same counterpart in NACP and other civil rights organizations. I was there for two years, and my job was to go around to investigate anti-hate crimes against Asian Americans throughout the country. And uniformly, I met with police chiefs, and they have the same response that we had in Oakland. "We don't discriminate against Asians." I said, "But there's a hate crime." He said, "Well, that wasn't a hate crime, that was just a random killing of an Asian American." That's the first thing. The second thing, addressing Rebecca's point about how do you keep people, how do you entice people to be on the police force? It's very simple, you've got a lot of foreclosed homes out in East Oakland. Why don't you take those homes, talk to the banks, whoever owns those homes, get habitat for the neighborhood, the way we used to fix up those homes, and then rent those homes out for one dollar a year to somebody who grew up in that neighborhood, who wants to be on the police force. Tell them that they have to serve on the police force for ten years. During the period of time, they pay one dollar a year for rent. They can save the rest of the money and buy, use it as a down payment and go somewhere else. But at least they're around for ten years, and they become the beat cop for that area. They grew up in that area. It's very simple. The unions then would have an opportunity to create programs for statement ducking for years, saying that we've been looking for qualified people from the communities of color to be in our union, but we can't find anybody. And let me tell you, my father was the first non-white person in IDW 595 in nineteen forty-three. IDW is the electrical union. Because he was an Asian American, they kept him as an apprentice from nineteen forty-three until nineteen sixty. So he had to work in Chinatown six days a week at a gas station to support his family, even though he was a unit electrician. So the unions haven't changed. They continue to shut out people of color. And so the Black community is correct in saying, "Listen, we're twenty-eight percent of the population. You get on city projects, we only get five percent of those construction jobs. What are you gonna do about it? Let's confront the unions."
Do you wanna jump back in, Rebecca? If you wanna have a minute or two to talk a little bit more about police, or to jump in?
Yeah, just finish up a couple of things. I just wanna mention that the issue about oversight is like thoroughly, I mean, it's not just the police, it's every step of the way we need oversight, the council, the city, every, we need oversight and enforcement of ethics. But with LL and unfortunate, we didn't get the binding arbitration. But the reality is, the contract doesn't allow for it now. And I would fight to, I would not sign a book for against the contract. They didn't include exclusion on the binding arbitration issue around the, you have civil rights or violations or any other criminal things, we get out of the way. I think you all know about the problem of binding arbitration is, often is like, they don't like to give one big winner. It's like they kinda cut the baby down the middle, which is not firing an officer, it's keeping them on anyway. So that's changed. Also, I wanna mention, in this, I mean, I thought enforced error from the mayor with regards to like, not telling the truth about who was fired, fired, or she suggested that the chief resigned. Now, that was unnecessary, but I will say that I don't trust any of the stuff that happened. I'm not sure that the so-called suicide-suicide of the police officer is not a murder-suicide. And I would like to see we go beyond just the local searching on that subject. I think it's much bigger. Why all the, this is just, this is all conjecture at this point, because you don't know the truth. But all that hiding was more than just, I think, hiding exploitation of a young person. I think it was also hiding the fact that they covered up a gross murder of one of their officers, of his wife. And that's the brutality. Yeah, another example of brutality has been covered up, that we can't talk about on some level, because it's so prey, but I think it's real.
Peggy, did you wanna jump in? Rebecca, do you wanna jump in? Any remaining stuff about police oversight, accountability, community police relations?
Well, I do wanna say that in the current ongoing sexual misconduct mess, that the, I am, I assure you're concerned that the cover-up is as big of a problem now, that not only is this an issue of how many officers are alleged to have had sex with this young woman and engaged in infopriety in various ways with her, but it's also now a major issue of how many people knew about misconduct and helped to cover it up. And to me, that is at least as important as the underlying offense, is the chain of command acting to keep it silent and protect the underlying offense. And I think that's part of why it's done so much to reawaken this sense of mistrust, is that, not that the sense of mistrust is new or didn't exist, but the fact of not only the misconduct allegations, but how many people all the way up the chain of command were alleged to have known about it and done nothing about it. Solving that is essential to solving this case, and that's part of why I'm incredibly troubled that the administration chose not to investigate all the way up the chain of command. You know, the mayor held a press conference to announce, "We've investigated it, look at us, we're doing so great", but chose to not investigate all the way up the top of the chain of command. And I am getting that question everywhere. And by the way, it's part of why we lose some of the arbitrations. The arbitrator will say, "Well, you didn't prosecute the higher-ranked person who did this, so you must have not really believed it was a real wrongdoing." But in this case, given how many people are alleged to have known about it and let it go on, I think that that investigation really needs to happen too.
Peggy, do you think that's, do you think the administration is doing as bad a job as what they're saying? What's your take on it?
You know, I haven't really been at the table around this, as much as I really see all the details. I, you know, so, let me back up. I'm having some feelings, and I'm not quite sure how articulate what they are as a Black woman who walks the world and dealing with racism her whole life. And we're talking about the police department as only one piece of the bigger conversation that is happening in the city. We talk about contracts, we talk about a community that is not seeing themselves anymore. We're seeing communities that are being displaced. All of this is adding up and building up, and that is real. And we need to talk about why. And how we see each other is not working, because some people look at a Black man or a Black woman, and they have an opinion about who they are and what they're gonna do. And so it's challenging. This is like hard as heck. And if you don't know what it's like, and maybe some of us do, I don't think it's just Black folks, but I think there are other people from different parts of the world. Are you that on that? Okay, I know some other people too. But there's different fights that we have, you know? Our fight is a Black woman who happens to be a lesbian, that happens to be a Black lesbian in the white world, have to be a Black lesbian in the Black world. What it's like to be able to drive your car down the street and get your shoulders all tense because of the police officer behind you. What it's like to have my nieces and my nephews to not even feel comfortable moving in the world. They have to pull up their pants, they gotta watch what they do, and people assume who they are. That happens just because. And so I don't know how to talk about that.
Can't talk about it.
I don't know how to say that that is at a core of this problem, and there's a lack of trust. And we have not done the healing work around that, at all, at all in this community. So until we get there to the core, we can put as much policy, I'm grateful for the oversight, I think it's going in the right direction. This is wonderful. But we're still having a conversation about equity in cannabis. All of that ties into the same thing. This is not a separate issue.
Can I make one comment? Two months after I left that job as the city attorney of Alameda, it was a famous incident on police radio where they're calling people jungle monkeys and monkeys after I told the mayor and the police department we got a problem with the culture of the Alameda police. It hasn't changed. It's still the same. You talk to Black people that live in Alameda, they're scared for their life. Black people that live in Alameda are scared. They've been profiled like crazy. And when I go knocking on doors here in Oakland, when I'm gonna do something, I run into Black families, and I ask the young man how many times they've been profiled. One guy said, "I've been profiled twice by the same officer in San Leandro." The guy forgot he had profiled him forty minutes earlier. Peggy, thoughts about, there's a real split. It's not gonna change.
But we have to do the hard work for it to change. And this is not easy, because I think that a lot of people don't even know their own privilege or conscious of privilege. It just shows up without any, it's not their fault. It's just they don't even realize it when it happens. It just doesn't, right? We created this together. And so this is just very, very deep. Looking forward to putting systems in place, grateful for the oversight committee. I think this is going in the right direction in terms of being able to. But that is just going to just get us a little bit there. But we don't even see each other. We have communities, say, you know, Black and white, but we can't sit at the dining table together to talk about how we move this community forward. We have the hills and the flatland that act like it's two different cities here, but our children are playing together. So how do we see each other to do the, I was in a group the other day, I asked them, I said, "Have you ever seen, have you ever rehearsed Sabrina Park?" You know, because they're born and raised here, been here for several generations. I said, "Do you know where Sabrina Park is?" They were like, "Where is Sabrina Park?" Right? So you don't even know, we don't even know who we are as Oakland. And we need to, because when we do that, we will recognize our greatness. We'll be able to actually begin to heal the shit that we need to heal, excuse me.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
You're allowed to swear.
We almost agree.
Let's swear, let's get it.
You should have heard Cass Hally yesterday. That was awesome. So do other people wanna tell them?
Yeah, let's talk about, let's go keep in the community. This is not my hometown, but I think a lot of us in the newsroom agree that one of the fundamental roles of government is to allow people who want to live in their hometown to keep that. And clearly, that is not happening in Oakland, and displacement is a crucial issue. And I'd like to, I'd like to get really specific about if elected, what solutions you would pursue, and what policy would you wanna discuss, or what that discussion would be like. And Bruce, we can start with you, if you'd like.
Sure. Well, my community is under attack right now. I don't know anything about the Chinese community. We were first divided by the powers that be when they ran aid through our community, wiped out half of Chinatown. We were then... We were then prohibited from going across Broadway. Deliberately prohibited from going across Broadway. So Chinatown stopped the Broadway. And we were also stopped from going uptown by the powers that be. And then for some odd reason, BART decided they wanted to take out three square blocks of Chinatown to build their building at the Lake Merritt BART Station. And now we are under fire at Twelfth and Harrison because Wood Partners wants to build a luxurious housing project there, overshadowing Lincoln Square. Part of Chinatown Coalition, we're trying to fight that off. I know we need affordability in this community. So in two thousand and twelve, when I was asked if I could bring in an investor by the former mayor, you know, for forty years, I went out, found an investor, twisted his arm. And you have four hundred and sixty affordable units in Brooklyn based. Twenty-three million dollar investment that I negotiated after walking out there at three or four in the morning for three or four days, thinking that I should be looking over my shoulder, see more than that and get mugged. East of five eighty, we've got forty-five parcels owned by religious organizations. It comprises about two million, two million square feet of unbuilt land. I don't know how much of that can be built upon, but certainly some of that can be built upon and can be discussed with the city officials as to whether or not the religious organizations are willing to sit down and try to create affordable housing, particularly workforce housing in that area. We also have forty-seven acres of unbuilt land along the four major thoroughfares in the flatlands. That's MacArthur, San Pablo, International Boulevard, and Telegraph Avenue. Those can be used for infill. I was a strong supporter of both the buy right of the government as part of something called the Two Hundred Project, which I'm on the leadership group with a gentleman named John Gambola, who's, they had a Greenland Institute. And then retired and came back because our community's teens of color lost major amount of their wealth because of the foreclosure in two thousand and eight. So we've got conferences up and down the state from Oakland to Fresno to San Diego, Sacramento, San Luis, we'll have him in San Jose, San Bernardino, where we're trying to rally philanthropic organizations to see how we can stimulate homeownership for people of our communities that suffer the most. Affordability is a key issue. The other issue is public safety. In Chinatown, if you are familiar with Chinatown, you can go there at six o'clock and it's completely dead. It was a Chinatown that my great grandfather found, it was nineteen oh six. It was viable when I was growing up, and now it's completely dead because we have graffiti problems, we have crime problems, we have homeless problems. If you go across Alameda, you'll find a homeless encampment behind Salvation Army, and the city will not do anything about that. We have a pollution problem, we have nitrogen dioxide that's being admitted by cars off two eighty and off the Webster Street. And when they sit there at five o'clock, that's essentially killing our senior citizens in Chinatown. So we have a lot of problems. We've got environmental problems, we've got affordability problems. We have education problems. We have, the school system does not deal with monolingual children, of recent immigrant families. And so we're trying to figure out how we deal with that. So one of the reasons why I decided to take money out of my retirement fund and run at the ripe old age of seventy is because I couldn't find a Asian American who was willing to step up because our community has been so slighted and so ignored that none of our young people want to run for office. And so I thought I'd try to set an example, because I've been doing this for many years, and it's frustrating.
Thank you.
That's why I'm here.
Thank you for being very specific as well with your solutions, Rebecca.
No, I, I really appreciate the question about displacement, because it is really destroying so much of Oakland. The, the families that are being kicked out, you know, the rift of interpersonal relationships. But then it has multiple impacts. So you have the suffering of the people being displaced and having to either leave town, schlep further, live in substandard housing. But then you're also having a society-wide problem, which is that we can't attract and retain teachers and public sector workers in a variety of essential jobs. So it's not only a horror for the human beings who are being displaced, but it is undermining the whole fabric of the city. And, you know, schools can't keep teachers, so then that undermines education. You know, we're having trouble hiring EMTs because they can't find housing. And so then that undermines people getting emergency medical treatment. So there are, there are real impacts to everybody in the community from this. I have a strong history of this. I actually worked as a tenants' rights lawyer before running for office. And I was part of the grassroots coalition that passed the original Just Cause for Eviction in Oakland over a decade ago. And just this term, I was the lead author of Measure JJ, which is now on the November ballot, that is a direct response to the displacement crisis. So there's a couple of big things going on that's causing the displacement. One is people literally being served with evictions, like you have to leave and then being pushed out. But there's also excessive rent increases that even though they aren't called evictions, the excessive rent increases for some people are so high that it ends up essentially being the same as an eviction, because they can't pay the higher rent, and so they end up being pushed out. And so I worked with a very broad grassroots coalition to write Measure JJ, and it responds on multiple levels. It prevents the excessive rent increases, because it no longer will allow the landlord to just issue a rent increase of whatever amount they want. Now, if they want to issue an amount above the rate of inflation, they're gonna have to go to the rent program and get permission and prove why they should be allowed to raise it by more. So that'll protect renters from the excessive rent increases. It also expands the protections of Just Cause for Eviction, so that more units are covered. And what that law does is it says you can't evict someone for no reason. The person actually has to have done something wrong, you know, there has to be a cause for evicting. So that'll cover more units. And then the third thing it does is it increases public information and public accountability of the rent board. And so that, of course, if enforced, would go a long way toward helping with the displacement problem. And, you know, when we talk about what it really means to bring community together, if you've been following what's been going on in Alameda around this same issue, there's this horrible painful fight where there's a version written by the activists, and there's a version written by the city council, and they're both on the ballot, and they're competing against each other. And it's undermining the goal of strong renter protection. And because I come out of the activist movement and I'm now on the city council, I was able to be that bridge and work with the activists as well as with my colleagues and craft a renter protection measure in Oakland that has the support of the council and the activists and is endorsed by the Labor Council, Democratic Party, and all the other major places. And so that's a really important part, both what's in the measure and then also doing the work to really build the coalition to pass the measure. Beyond that, I've been working to help pass impact fees on development to fund affordable housing, because we need both to stop the displacement that's going on right now, but also build for the future significantly more housing at all income levels in Oakland. Helped to pass zoning updates to make it easier to add secondary units, as well as for transit oriented development. And also submitted last year a budget amendment to expand enforcement and community education of the renter laws, because of course, even while we're to strengthen the laws, we know that people need to know about the laws and they need to be enforced. So that was another thing I did, a budget amendment to fund that work.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is crazy, right? So, and then I'm a renter. Let me just say that I'm a renter and, and I have a very unfortunate dynamic. It's happened where I am for now, almost thirteen years. And so a couple of things, that's one to say, particularly about Measure JJ. I think it is definitely great and going in the right direction. And I think it's just kind of touching the service. I don't know if it's necessarily addressing, you know, the housing crisis itself, but it definitely keeps people in place. Because as soon as that individual leaves, uh, the department, I left out of my apartment right now, it would go up to market rate to thirty thousand dollars. So that doesn't do anything for anybody, but it does take care of me and my family, and that is important. And having more people to follow in the category is great. I think what I would like to have seen about around now a little bit more.